Campbell is on his way in, but he asked that we start without him. Roll call please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
For all present.
Here.
Madam Mayor. Yes, sir. Councilman Campbell left me in my second seat. I think that he asked us to start without him and catch up. Okay. I thought, yes, sir, Councilman Slater.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls to discuss Mr. Zurleig's memo. Do you call a special meeting? That good?
Okay.
Can we do that?
No.
In a special meeting.
Well, it is a special meeting and the agenda has been prepared and...
I can't suspend the rolls?
Not without all of the members of council present.
Ooh.
Thank you.
I'll wait then.
We can address it.
We can address it.
I understand.
You could probably find out if there were consensus, no action could be taken, but you can't do it without suspending.
He was on the way. I'll just read. I know we have to give 24 hour notice.
Correct. Mrs. Bittner is well aware of that.
I just want to make sure we got it done before.
Thank you. I thought we should begin with ground rules for our interview before we call either of the gentlemen in. I was thinking that we might each ask two questions and the order of the questions would be the chair would ask first. And then the rules of procedure order that we use or that we decided upon to determine who would be Mayor Pro Tem. So it would be first the chair and then Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis, Councilman Slater, Councilman Fleming, Councilman Teetz, Councilman Henderson, and then Councilman Campbell. I thought if we asked two questions and didn't do a lot of follow-up at that time, we could make notes while everyone is asking their questions. And maybe in the questions that the other council people are asking, we'll find the answers that we're looking for. And then after we've interviewed the person with all of our questions, we might do a follow-up around the table and then call the next gentleman in. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I thought we would ask Mr. Shripkai in first because he turned his resume in first. Do you want to down by Mr. Zurleig? Do you want to down by Mr. Zurleig?
I think we've met before. Senior veteran.
Oh, I see. Good evening, Mr. Shripkai. It's a very nice resume that you have. I'm going to ask you two questions first of all, and then Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis will, and then around the table, we'll ask you two questions and then possibly a follow-up round. First of all, I was thinking on a big picture, what are the goals that you see are important for interim city manager?
Actually, make sure you have your agenda correctly, sign purchase orders. Try not to establish anything that's going to interfere with your new city manager. Handle personnel in place. And that's about it. Just make sure that Dave Beaver stays where it is. Now, there's more, but try not to implement anything. New help counsel where they need it. That's all.
Okay. And my second question would be on a daily basis, on your schedule of events that you might find reoccurring, what would you think would be some tasks that would help you accomplish this set of goals that you have?
As you know, I've spent some time here and in the position of assistant city manager and certainly helping John when he was gone. I think it's the same issues. First of all, make sure that we have no issues with our citizens, that they're all treated fairly and correctly and in a timely manner. That's a priority. Keep council informed of what's going on in the city, of any issues that may be coming up. Day-to-day operation of the staff, of course, you have a staff meeting, find out what's going on, you watch over. I think it's important, especially now with the conditions of staffing in the city, to find out a little more about who's who and how things are being done. I have some knowledge how they should be done. And hopefully, that's the way it is. I think that's the day-to-day operation, is to make sure citizens, council, and staff are being careful.
Good evening, Councilman Campbell. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
This is probably more of a detail-oriented question, but what is, what would be some of your preferred methods for communication with? One part of the question would be staff members and department heads, and then the other part of the question would be council.
Face-to-face, usually. I find, or half-found with what I currently am doing and with what I've done in the past, you save a lot of time. You can meet face-to-face and get a direct answer or at least provide an answer. That's my main method of communication.
For both, then?
I would prefer that, yes.
Okay. Let's see. And I guess another question in a different vein would be if you could give us kind of a general statement at your approach to maintaining or encouraging positive public relations.
I think I'm good at that. I just, I don't know if that's an approach as much as it is your demeanor. It's the way you're going to go about business. Again, I'm going to go back. Most of the staff you have here have either worked for me in the past or with me. I believe those were all pretty good relationships. Certainly, the public was a big part of my day. And I think I handle people with truthful answers, first of all. If there's something that we can do, fine. If we can't do it, here's the reason why. I just, I'm a positive person. If there's a problem I think we can solve and take care of it one way or another. Whoever will find it to do it or to tell you that it can't be done. I think it's just my personality, the way I deal with people.
Councilman Slater?
Thank you. Could you discuss your schedule for the next three months and do you think it's necessary that you be here full-time?
And this is something I told John, this is the reason I, when I said okay for my name to be on the list, was that with the caveat, I do have several commitments. I don't believe that it's a priority for an interim city manager to be here five days a week. I've done this in the past. That's saying you shouldn't be aware of everything, but a good organization is a sign of good management, not here. Things are running well and administrator's done his job, then everybody should be able to do their job. I do have commitments. If you think you want me to be here, I need to let you know that in June, I have a three-day conference I'm going to Tuesday mornings. I have commitments. I've been appointed by the Supreme Court to the Oakland County Foster Care Review Board, and we do have hearings. I'm a mentor with Waterford Youth Assistance, and that is a weekly thing, but that will be over with probably shortly after school is out. I have some other things going. Obviously, I wouldn't do any consulting work while I'm here. That wouldn't interfere. There's nothing on the calendar right now that can't be taken care of by some other people. But I wouldn't expect to work five days a week. That would be my one comment to you. The schedule would be somewhat flexible.
I might want to follow up with that, but...
What, your question number two?
I'll ask my question number two first.
Okay.
You know, people always ask at some interview you, so I'll ask you, why in the world do you want to do this?
I was hoping nobody would guess. Well, no, I, like I said, I have still a lot of concerns with the city of Troy. I don't work here anymore. I've been gone, but it was an excellent city. There, you know, there were good people here, there was good residents, the community itself was very progressive. We've had some tough times in the last five or six years, and it's created some issues. To be honest with you, I know that, you know, a lot of good people have gone. A lot of people are trying to take their place and do the best they can. And to be honest with you, I think, I come in here and work with these people for three or four, three months hopefully or less, that there'll be an ease. I think as John leaves, it won't be a complete change for all the staff, those that have been here for some time. And it would give them some comfort. They know my style, they know what I expect. I don't see any problems there. And so I felt, you know, it's one of those things that would work out best for everybody. I'm certainly not looking for a job, if that's the question. I mean, I would do this on an interim basis, but I think the city still has issues, but it has certainly a lot of potential. There's things that you're going to take care of to make it better, and maybe I can help.
Thank you.
Councilman Fleming?
Good question, yes. Can you describe for me your management style? I know you like to meet face-to-face, but do you prefer staff meetings? Do you walk around a lot? Do you visit departments? Just what are your style as a manager?
Yeah.
All day long?
People, you know, I was accused of being a hall walker when I was there. I was just looking to see who had donuts. But, no, I'm pretty much hands-on. The door is open. I'm going to stop and see if I have a concern or a question, or if you haven't brought something to me that I think I should know about, then I'm going to walk down to your office. Same thing, I want you to come to me. I don't want any surprises. Certainly, council doesn't want it. So my management style is pretty much hands-on. Out in the field. Can't tell if things are getting done out there unless you see.
Okay. There's another question.
Councilman Teetz?
Yes. Just ask a question maybe in a different way, but what do you view as the largest challenge during the interim period? Clearly, you've been involved in the organization, so you have quite some ideas of symptoms, but what do you see during the three months or whatever, four months or so?
I don't see a lot of challenge, other than maintaining status quo. Again, I think it's real important not to disrupt the operation for a short term, and then a new manager come in and he's going to have all kinds of ideas himself. The biggest challenge is to maintain what you have or to make it better if there's some issues, but try not to do too much.
Everyone's taking my questions, so I'll pass on.
Same here. Most of the questions have been asked that I had written down, but as interim manager, what does day one have in store? Everybody thinks about, what am I going to do on the first day I get in? What would your plan be for that?
They're not going to let me hire and fire, I know that. No, the first day, obviously, I want to meet with John and get a snapshot of what's going on. You're in your budget right now. By the time he leaves, you'll have a budget on the table. I'd like to know what that's about. What issues are there coming up? Are there things that are long-term that you've been working on, you expect to be done? Check with Lori, see if there's issues. And then meet with staff. First day.
And second question is more of a comment. I just noticed at the base of your resume, you have, you served in the Marine Corps. I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Sorry for being late. I apologize. I drove as fast as I could. Got really a couple of questions. First, I noticed on your resume, there's nothing on her about your educational background. Can you give me a little resume about your education?
Graduated high school, went to Carpenter Apprentice School, went to Marine Corps, got back from Vietnam, went to work. A few classes here and there, but no college degree.
And so the second question is, do you have any concerns about taking a leadership position here in Troy with the state, current state of the city? Obviously, we have financial issues. We have some employee morale issues. We have recall campaigns against Mayor Daniels, as well as three of our illustrious colleagues. How do you feel about that? And maybe expound on it, it just doesn't...
I really don't have, again, as an interim city manager, that's the job of the new manager coming in, to be involved more so with those things. The recall petition has no bearing. The people that are on council today are the people that are on council. That's what we do.
Thank you. I don't have any follow-up questions myself, just some per five. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Well, I have one follow-up, it's kind of a follow-up question. I noticed, obviously, I can tell what your background is, where you've got probably the most experience that you can bring to the table, which is obviously wonderful. I was wondering if you thought that there were any departments or categories that you would just be overseeing day-to-day? I know it's not necessarily making changes, but were there any that you felt you didn't have as much experience in? And what were the things that you might do to get up to speed in those departments? Obviously, plan, I mean, there are a ton of things that I know would...
Well, having served as assistant city manager for five years, I was in charge of planning, building, engineering, parks and rec, DTW, capital projects, interactions with personnel, purchasing, finance.
Library?
Library, museum, all the, you know. We were, in my five years, very, very busy at that time, so there was a lot of interactions with everybody. Probably the one thing I would be most dependent on is your financial person. I understand we don't have a full-time. I don't know what you want to call it anymore. I mean... Interim finance director. Interim finance director. So, I mean, that would probably be the biggest one and where I would need some help. Not that I'm familiar with it, and I've done the budgets as well as Mr. Lomarano and whoever, but that would probably be my one. And I would look for help from all of them, but I would need help, mostly from finance, probably.
Okay. Councilman Slater?
Just a follow-up to the schedule issue. I'm not sold that the interim has to be here five days a week either, but just to clarify, are you looking at a permanent four-day week? Can you just shed some more light on that a little bit?
Well, if it came down...
If we required you to be here, you could be here?
There, I'm going to be honest, there's days when I'm not going to be here. It's not a lot, and it's not that I'm scheduling things, but there are a lot of things on the schedule. And I, again, I think I know what you're looking for, and I hope that there would be enough confidence that would allow me to run the schedule. I don't want to commit to four days. If that doesn't fit, then that's fine, you know, but it would be somewhat difficult to say I could work 32 hours a week. I don't see it being 24 hours a week, but if it's an hourly thing, you know, four full days.
Councilman Fleming?
Sure. Compensation, what's your consideration there? What do you think is fair?
Well, I think you've seen the range, and that's a good, a good range for city manager. When I do my other consulting work or expert witness work, that's different. There's a different fee that's lower. And I think that if it's the $50 to $100, and you're looking for a full-time person at whatever the fee, I would drop down to the 75 or 80. There's another issue, is that at some point, I do draw social security, so that figures into it too, in my hours and the money's made, because basically, the government's going to get back what you give me. So I'd like to make the compensation worthwhile in the first book. So 75 to 80, I'll take the middle of the road.
I'll pass on. Any questions?
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Moser, thanks.
Okay. I think we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there, excuse me, is there a process tonight? Is there a notification? Do we know how that's going to work?
Well, we're going to have some discussion, and then we will notify you. I'm not sure that it'll be tonight. I would think that, were we thinking that we'd bring them both back in together or just complete the process individually and so you could leave?
The question is, do I stay?
I was going to say, if you want to leave, maybe you could. What's the consensus at the table?
My feeling should be is after we finish the second interview, we'll have someone from staff notify them tonight or tomorrow.
But he doesn't have to stay.
Yeah.
That's the question. It's not a problem.
No. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Colpepper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council.
We've set up the method, we're each going to ask two questions of you, go around the table once, and then if there's any follow-up questions, we'll go around another time. And then, quite frankly, you can leave and go home, and we'll notify you either this evening or later in the week when we make our decision. So I'll begin, and I'll ask you the same question that I asked Mr. Shripkai, and that is, in the big picture, what do you see as the role of an interim city manager? What do you think your goals might be?
Well, I think the goals would be to keep things on an even keel during a relatively short period of time. Really, not to establish any large changes or big objectives on your own. Find out what the council's feelings are for the short period of time, and then ethically, go about the daily work of paying bills and meeting with developers and talking to the citizens and all the typical things that a city manager has to do. But I think it's very important to have this even keel, to be very prudent during the interim period, and not really have a specific personal agenda by any means.
Okay. Good answer. My second question was then, would you have anything on a daily calendar or a weekly calendar that you would want to do to further this goal? What would you see your day looking like to keep your goals in alignment?
Well, first of all, you've got to be in contact with all of the department heads, and so I assume there is still a weekly meeting at least with the department heads, so that you can find out what is going on with them. But at the same time, inspire in them that you're not, I wouldn't be here to be hugely altering their daily operations. Whatever's going on is smooth. If there's something, of course, that becomes a little bit erratic, you'd want to deal with that. But once again, to promote the calm, smooth transition between now and the time you hire a new manager at that time, maybe even set up a situation where those department heads are looking forward to some special agenda, something, some more specific and larger goals to be moving toward.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis?
Just kind of duck tails into that last question. What personal characteristic traits do you think you have that would really assist in the transition process? So what are some things that you think you could bring to the table as an individual that would help staff, citizens, residents, and council feel comfortable in this transition period?
Well, I, first of all, a very calm person. I don't have an anger problem whatsoever that some people may have. So whenever there's a situation that does arise, I typically look at it from as many angles as I possibly can and deal with that sort of thing. So I think the staff would appreciate that sort of thing, realize that things are not going to be stirred up while I'm here. I would hope that I would promote cohesiveness. I've done this in the past. I've served as interim two different times before being appointed, and it worked out very well. So through some very, very difficult times in the past that where we had city managers actually fired and was able to go in and calm things down and keep the fires from getting out of hand.
Another question. What's your preferred method of communication with department heads and staff? That would be one part of the question. And then how do you envision getting information to council or interacting with council if they have questions over the time that you'd be serving as interim manager?
Well, our preferred method with department heads is direct communication. However, once you establish that communication, that personal communication, on a regular basis, sometimes you really do need to go to the electronics. Once they understand that... Once they understand that and they don't feel like they're being isolated, you can use the typical electronics that are available for quick emails and things of that sort. But I do not believe that you should rely upon that completely. You need to have a certain amount of face-to-face and certain amount of voice-to-voice communication with them. Now with council, I would have to find out what the council is looking for. I have dealt with council members who want specific attention on the phone. I have dealt with some who are very busy at airports and prefer to be emailing and texting and that sort of thing for information that they couldn't come in, they weren't nearby. They wouldn't meet the council meetings. So there are just, there are different methods that have to fit to different needs. Some council want to be asking questions all of the time. Some just want a synopsis, a written report, and once that is figured out. Now, there may be a system that John has already established that everyone is happy with. And maybe everyone would like to follow that. Whatever it is, it would work for me.
Counselor Slater?
Thank you. Could you discuss your schedule with us and your availability for the next three months? And do you see this as a full-time or part-time position?
Well, I am very, I've been taking a lot of vacations since I have been retired. However, I have nothing scheduled for the next four months at all. So I am totally available for that period of time. Now typically, working as a manager, I'm not sure what the hours expectations are, but there was never a week that you could say was going to be under 45 hours. That was a very low typical week. So I'm not sure how much time is actually going to be necessary. But I realize that a city manager is the chief executive and requires time and energy out of them. So I'm available.
I ask this question too. Why in the world do you want to do this?
Well, let me put it this way. It's not something that I am really aspiring towards. John called and asked if I would submit my name. And my thoughts were, well, for the good of the city, I will do that. I have put together a long list of pros and cons, and I have an awful lot of cons on my list. And I have, I'm pretty comfortable in some of my patterns that I have right now. Some of my friends and my wife have been encouraging me to come here because they feel that there's something that I have to offer and I'm available. And so I'm encouraged by friends and relatives to pursue this. But it's not something that I am really pushing for personally. I see no personal gain in this. But I see that I do have a lot of talent and a lot of information that can be useful to the city where I live. Thank you.
Counselor Fleming?
Are you interested in full-time?
No, not at all.
Second question, how do you manage? Can you describe your management style? You talked about you like to meet people face-to-face, but how do you really manage day-to-day?
Well, on a day-to-day basis, I try to establish a large system of rapport, basically, to where people are understanding where we're going, what the general concepts are, and then tinker with that as you go along. Sometimes there are minor little problems that you have to put special emphasis on. But you need to trust your department heads because most of them are experts. Probably all of them are experts in their field right now. I don't think you have any new people. If they need some mentoring or some change in direction because maybe they are not maybe taking advantage of certain things, as an example. In dealing with a treasurer a few years back who had been around a long time, she had a difficult time in understanding that, it's hard to imagine this, that there were banks outside the city limits that were offering better deals on short-term money than just the local banks. And it required getting on the telephone and polling people and talking to some of them face-to-face. So that required that personal attention of sitting down with them and saying, here's what we want, I want you to do, and we'd like to see results at a certain time. And so that kind of gets back to a general theme of establish some goals. You help them along towards those goals, explain fairly clearly, monitor that, and then have an expectation of time, of a deadline when that should be done. And that's the way that I like to follow when it comes to specifics. As I mentioned before, a general sense of trust and understanding of where the whole organization is going is the way that I like to do regular business when we're not involved with specifics.
Counselor Tease?
Yep. Make some good decisions and look at the pros and cons. And I'm sure many of those cons are changing lifestyle and take, do the, come back to the city manager type of lifestyle. But can you tell us, were there any things related to the city itself that was on the con side?
That is a good question. I was looking at from a personal side. A con from the city? I don't think so. I know most of the department heads, I know many of the employees. I'm very familiar with the operations. I've been in contact with people throughout the years, even though I haven't been working here. And there are some things that I believe there should be some improvements on or some attention given. And whether it's possible to do that because of the financial situation that exists right now, I'm not sure. But it's hard to even think about, I didn't even think about that, the city itself.
I just wanted to ask that question and, oh, there's another thing I was going to ask. Well, we'll come back to it, maybe I'll order in just a moment.
Counselor Henderson?
Along the line of Doug, I had written down here, said pros and cons. Would you like to share any of those or not?
Well, let me see. The pros were some stimulation. I have always, I continue to be interested in the city. Not only this city, but in government in general. I have been a consultant for a couple of years. That kind of work has dried up right now. But I've worked for, I think it's about seven different cities doing studies, mentoring some of their employees and things of that sort. So I like that, and I've been able to help some of those cities out. I've been very aware of Detroit's situation. And I have attempted to write my own scenarios of how to correct a lot of things there. There's a term that I like to use for myself. I call myself an urbanologist just because I continue to have an interest in this sort of thing. And with all the years that I've spent here, there are a lot of things I like to go back and look at to see how well things are holding up or what kind of changes have taken place since I've left. Whether it's a water main project, a road project, or just to see an improvement in, let's say, voting methods. So that's the pro side. The cons, like I said, are all personal. They're all, I have to get up early and go to work every day. Perhaps I can meet with my friends and have a coffee and a doughnut quite as often. And there'll be some restrictions on golf and things of that sort. But it's temporary.
Yep, the last thing I had jotted down here, you, you know, everybody makes decisions through life. And I know it's back in Walsh College in 1974. What prompted you to go from making a move into the private sector to going to the public sector? Was there a decision point?
Well, in 1971 is when I started with the city of Troy. So I happened to go to Walsh because it was convenient. And being of, being poor at the time, I could afford other types of schooling. It was close by and it worked well for me. Now, whether it was private or public, originally, when I had gotten out of the Army, I tried to start a business. I couldn't get financing and worked in sales for a while. And was lucky enough to land a job at the city of Troy. And I didn't think I would be here very long. I remember people doing interviews saying, well, he's got other ideas. I don't think he's going to be around more than a year, year and a half. And things changed.
And thank you for your service in the military.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, number one, your resume is very impressive, very nice. Now, one question, if you were us interviewing you, what would you ask yourself as far as becoming an interim manager?
I'd ask, first of all, very similar questions that you've asked so far. The one advantage I think you have is all the candidates have, they're an open book. Some of the people that I've interviewed in the past for city manager jobs, you couldn't find out enough about them. They were out of state and you could only hear what they had to say. So you could only go by their best salesmanship. And that's not necessarily the best quality for a city manager. Useful, but not maybe the best. So specifically getting back to the questions, questions about integrity and ethics. And do you have any wild ideas that were sort of asked? What is your agenda? What do you intend to do? How do you treat people? How do you treat citizens? How do you treat the workforce? What is your, it doesn't really apply too much to a short term. But what is your philosophy in working with the citizens? And the philosophy working for the citizens? They're paying taxes, it's coming out of their pocket. That's hard to come by for a lot of people. And they have no choice. And you're the only game in town when it comes to services. I think you've got a responsibility to give them as much bang for their buck as possible. Those are the kind of questions that I might expect.
I don't have any follow-up questions. Mayor Protem McInnes?
What do you see as your role in creating, helping us to create a positive image to the public here for the city of Troy? Or what kinds of things have you done in the past with Auburn Hills that you think have helped public relations?
Well, Auburn Hills is a little bit different than it is here. We were attempting to do a lot of salesmanship, trying to do a tremendous amount of schmoozing with business people. And it required a lot of public meetings and showing up at the Rotary and the Optimist Clubs and all those types of civic organizations. So there was a lot of that. Now, being available for that is what the city manager should do. If the council's wish is that, sometimes on interim bases, it may be stay in the office, make sure lid is kept on everything, pay the bills, don't make any alliances out there because you're just a temporary guy. I don't know, I don't know which way you want to go. But if you can keep a communication open with people coming through the door who want to develop something, be a business-oriented type of government that is open to new ideas and instead of creating roadblocks to try to streamline things and make it smooth for people to operate, that can work too. So whether it's get out there and sell, or it's have a nice, warm, fuzzy relationship, or be open for business, I think that's going to be your call. I can work in all of those areas. But I think all of that is applicable depending upon the city. And once again, I'm not the one who wants to establish an agenda here. But I want to hear which way you want to go for that sort of thing. Very flexible when it comes to that.
Counselor Slater?
I'm good.
Counselor Fleming?
As relative to compensation, what would be your expectation for paying the interim?
I'm going to have to give you some kind of a broad answer here in that. Because there are no benefits that are expected and wanted, and no cars involved, none of those perks whatsoever, that the dollar amount would probably be a little bit higher than what, much higher than the bottom, but nowhere near the top. Now, I don't think your selection should be based upon dollar amount. But I would expect about $70 an hour.
Counselor Tease?
Pass.
Counselor Henderson?
Pass.
Counselor Campbell?
Pass.
Well said, thank you very much. Someone will notify you of our decision.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Good job.
We'll move on to the appointment process. From my standpoint, they're both impressive. I did notice one thing on Rand McNally. Mr. Culpepper lives five miles away, while Mr. Shripka lives 17 miles away. And I think that's something that should be taken into consideration as well when you've got two great candidates like this. Mayor Protem McInnes?
It's a difficult decision, really. I mean, I think that there are notable qualities in both candidates. Really, I think we would be very lucky to have either one of them. I think we're lucky to have both of them on board and say that they'd be willing to assist us on this time. I'm not sure if it was the resume or some of the answers that I got. I think that they both seem to have experience in pretty much all of the departments that they would be overseeing. I was happy to hear both of them come in and say kind of what we've been discussing here at the council table and the few conversations we've had so far. They're not looking to come in and change the way that the city works. In a few months, they're really both just hoping to kind of keep it on task. They both seem to have good familiarity with the people that work here and the citizens. You know, to me, there are a couple of things that I noticed, both in the resume and the answers to the questions, that just felt like maybe an experience in a, the experience in a broader sense, I seemed to get a little bit more of that from Mr. Culpepper. But I don't know if that's really something that carries across the board or it was just the way it was conveyed to me. So I'm anxious to hear what everyone else says. I really think that we would be lucky with either candidate. I think, I mean, I know we're not judging on compensation, but they both seem to be fair and in the same ballpark. The distance doesn't bother me as much. I don't think it's totally unreasonable. But obviously, having someone that's a citizen in Troy, living five miles away, is something to, you know, to take into consideration as well. So I'm anxious to hear what everyone else has to say.
Counselor Slater?
With this, the scheduling, there was one difference too that I just, when I looked at you. I'm sorry, it just made me think of it. I think both answers were totally fair in terms of what they would be willing to offer. I'm not sold on the fact that we need to have someone that comes in here and is ready to be here 45, 50, 60 hours a week when they're not trying to change the world. So I think both answers were totally fair and reasonable. But obviously, having one candidate tell us that they were very flexible. And they, you know, for this particular period of time, they didn't have a lot of set plans already versus the other person, that I think that they would be able to give us, you know, a fair amount of hours. I think what I heard from Mr. Shripka was more along the lines of he really needed the flexibility for his schedule. It may not be a ton of time that he needed every week, but that it sounds like with hearing dates, it may be things that he really can't plan ahead for. Versus we kind of got the opposite answer from Mr. Culpepper. You know, he really had the flexibility for us. You know, obviously, we're going to be talking about meeting dates and things that we're going to have to be scheduling here that may not be at our planned meeting schedule for the year, that everyone knows a year in advance. So hearing that that person would be more flexible, that was something that I think stuck out in my mind as being a bonus. So.
Counselor Slater?
Well, I echo those comments myself. I know both these gentlemen very well, worked with both of them. And they would, either one would be good in my eyes. And I think they're both doing it for the right reason. I thought they were here to help, was the theme that I, so I'm really neutral on this. They're both very qualified, would do both, do very well. And I'll listen to what the other comments have. I could live with both of them. I could live with both of them.
Councilman Fleming?
First of all, I'd just like to thank City Manager Zerlag for bringing these two candidates and recommending them both. They're both very qualified for some of the same reasons as Council Mayor Potemekinness. I'm leaning more toward, I think, Mr. Culpepper because of his availability. I think both of them are doing it for the right reason. There's no hidden agenda there. I think you're getting what you see there. A very straightforward man, a man of integrity that really wants to help the city. But I think one reason, because Mr. Culpepper actually had experience managing Auburn Hills in a couple of difficult situations, I think he might have a slight advantage. But if it didn't work out with him, Mr. Shripka would be certainly incapable too. But I think there's some slight advantage to having Mr. Culpepper in this position at this point.
Councilman Teetz?
Yeah, I, I think with, I'm leaning towards Mr. Culpepper for a couple of reasons. Number one, regarding the scheduling and realizing that the council's scheduling is going to be in flux. And it's, it's difficult to get seven people together and even include eight. The second, the second thing is I was a little concerned when Mr. Culpepper started talking about looking for changes or improvements. But after he spoke a little bit longer, I realized it's, it's more of his nature of trying to, always, always trying to find best practices and having a passion for local government. Just like, just always interested in what's underneath the rock. And I, I think that, that was seen in both candidates. And I also appreciated Mr. Culpepper's background in marketing the city of Auburn Hills. And granted, we didn't ask that question, Mr. Shripka. But having that background is something that's going to be needed as we're going through the changes right now in, in city management and through the hiring process. That's kind of where my head sits at the moment.
Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I am following with Sue here. I like Mr. Culpepper a great deal for a number of reasons. I, as you probably know, I'm a hometown fan and that he lives in Troy and is easily able to get here for meetings and whatnot is, is a big check mark in, in that category, that he's available. I think he mentioned forty-eight hours. You know, I don't know that we're going to need him either for that amount of time. I don't know what's involved in interim managers' day-to-day life. But certainly seems that he has a little more flexibility there. He also mentioned along in a lot of communications, his ability to communicate with people on the basis that they need communication. And that's, you know, some people are great with phones, others are great with emails, others text. And he seems to be embracing all of that. So I, I just think he makes a real good fit. Again, I appreciate Mr. Shripka's resume as well. We would not be behind the evil with either one of them, I don't think.
Agreed. Councilman Campbell?
Well, I, as much as I hate to do this, blavious and you agree with me greatly. I think I almost agree with you.
Write it down.
No, I think Mr. Culpepper has a very strong resume. I think they're both great guys. And he is available and lives closer to Troy, obviously living in Troy. Again, I believe either one of them would be good. But I think Mr. Culpepper is a little bit stronger for what we need. I, I did notice that both of them brought up a question, they, they kind of questioned us without any question as to what it is that you want us to do. This is, and then it goes back to any city manager we have. I mean, what, are we going to provide them a, a job description of what we want them to do? Is there such a thing for an interim manager to say this is, this is what we as a council expect them to do? Job description of some sort to, they both really asked the same thing.
There is a, it's called a position description. About ten or twelve years ago, Mrs. Sears had commissioned with council's approval, a hay study. And the Hay Group is a private sector compensation comparison and classification firm out of Chicago. And part of the exercise was to do essentially a job description for every position. And those are available through the HR department.
So it sounds to me like we have, were you raising again? I'm sorry.
I have a question. What exactly is that, description setting? Perhaps can get.
Both for a city manager?
Uh, for interim city manager.
Well, there's not, there's not one for an interim city manager.
Okay, sir. Well, perhaps we can speak generally and whoever speaks to whichever candidate. But I guess my thing is putting on cruise control and encourage the staff to keep up the good work. That, that would be, you know, as far as policy-wise, I'll say it that way.
Seems to me we almost have unanimous agreement already because I also think that Mr. Culpepper, because of the distance, because of his flexibility, because of his schedule, and he has, he has a wide range of talents, it appears, as does Mr. Shripka. But I just think that we all kind of have a sense that Mr. Culpepper might be the better choice at this point in time for an interim manager, even though either one would be excellent. I agree with that. So unless we need more discussion, have we got unanimous consent?
I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion? Okay.
I have a question. I know based on some of the questions that we asked during both of the interviews, we have kind of broached that subject of part-time, flexible schedule. I mean, is that something that we would really need to, not necessarily hash out? I don't think that we need to sit here and say we're looking for someone that can be in the building from nine until five. But is that something that we would need to hash out as a council first? So when we were to go back, we would go back to the candidates and let them know what the results of our discussion were, that they would have a better idea? Because I'm imagining that if we were going to take the offer back to one of the candidates before they accepted it, they would like to have some idea. So I know, I think from our conversations, it looks like we're looking for someone that's willing to be flexible. But I think there is maybe a little bit more discussion that we need to have about, you know, is this someone that we're expecting to be available five days a week? Is this someone we're expecting to be here? You know, I'm not sure. That's probably something that I would want to know if I was going to accept a job from someone. It seems like we had some discussion about it. So I don't know if anyone else has.
City Manager Zerlag, do you have any input on how many hours we need to have from this gentleman?
I would think, given the great staff that we have in place, that in conjunction with asking essentially for a gatekeeper, probably four days a week would be adequate. Thirty-two to thirty-five hours a week.
Mayor? Councilman Slater?
You know, under normal circumstances, I think I might agree with that. But because of our streamlining and some of the cuts that we've made, some of the part-time positions that we, that we have right now, I would personally like to see him here almost five days a week. Because the city manager, pretty much right now, is more of a hands-on city manager than he's ever probably been in the last four years at Auburn Hill. So if Mr. Culpepper is willing, if that is the choice and he's willing to commit to five days a week, I think that's where we should start, especially for the, for the first month. And then maybe we can reevaluate that. But just from my opinion, I, I think he should be, if he's willing to, and I think I heard he's willing to be here five days a week, I think we should start there. And, you know, he offered seventy dollars an hour and I think that's very reasonable. I think we should offer him seventy-five. But I just, from my personal opinion, I think he should be here more than four. And especially the first week or the first month. And then we can reevaluate maybe. But those are my reasons for that.
Councilman Teetz?
I, I agree with the Councilman Slater saying. And within a month, he will be able to give us the feedback to say, you know what? I don't really need to be here thirty-two hours over five days or thirty-two hours, you know, four days. So I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. But to initially start, and when would the starting date be? Because I would think it'd be healthy to have overlap.
My city manager badge self-destructs at 5:01 PM on May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
Well, I did notice the resolution does indicate that. But I think we could probably change that if, if somebody wanted us to.
The, the problem is that you need to have one city manager at a time. So that's why you have a specific time so that you don't have overlapping city managers. Now, that doesn't mean that he couldn't be asked to start ahead of time, but he would not have the title of, of city manager. That really should be very, very concise as to, as to when that transition will occur.
Okay, I'm, I'm personally in favor of bringing him a week ahead of time.
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I discussed this briefly with City Manager Zerlag already about how much time he felt would be appropriate to bring him in early. Just sort of shadowed. And Mr. Zerlag said, I'm going to be working right down to the wire, going really, really hard. And I think you indicated to me you felt two days, maybe three days at the max would be, would be ample time to get him to get on board. I'm open to whatever you want. But just going ahead, I think the seventy, seventy-five dollars an hour is fine. And forty hours a week, at least for the first few weeks until he gives us some feedback would be ample. I think that he needs to come in at least a couple of days. And I'm flexible on that, to shadow him.
Did someone want to bring the resolution forward?
Question.
Another question?
Do we, do we have to pass two resolutions then? A resolution? I guess we can't particularly hire someone until they're interim city manager, correct?
You could modify the resolution that's proposed and just add a clause at the end of it and just say, and also that the resolution says to appoint them as acting city manager effective, and also to, to hire them for a transition period the week before, whatever amount of time you want, before at, at a pay rate of seventy dollars. Four days a week, or forty hours a week.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Teetz?
How, how long would you think is the appropriate transition period?
Given both gentlemen, it will not be a very, it will not be a difficult transition. They could come in, my last day is on a Friday. They could come in Thursday morning. I could introduce them to the staff. They have not met yet. They know essentially what the job is about. Mike Culpepper from Auburn Hills and Gary from the city of Troy. And it will not take long to have them transition primarily working with Beth Tafnick and Mr. Miller, who essentially, even though he was redeployed to Director of Community and Economic Development, I rely on Mark whenever I'm gone to be the acting city manager. So with the help of Mark and myself, it will be a very smooth transition. Couple of days and it wouldn't even be four days.
Someone bring the resolution forward, please?
Madam Mayor? Just trying to have something, kind of have something together. I will move the resolution resolved that Troy City Council hereby appoints Michael Culpepper as acting city manager effective May eighteenth, two thousand and twelve at 5:00 PM. And also to hire him for a transition period beginning May seventeenth, two thousand and twelve at a rate of seventy-five dollars an hour.
For a forty-hour week? Do you want to add that?
I don't know if we should put it in there if we're going to potentially reevaluate. I think at this point, that should be, you know, we'll explain that that's what our expectation is. But I don't know if we need to put it in the resolution.
So resolution moved by Mayor Potemekinness, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Potemekinness?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. We have a new interim city manager, Mike Culpepper. Thank you. And it's time for public comment? Is there anyone?
You'll contact him?
Oh, that's right. You wanted to suspend the rules of procedure to set the special meeting.
Do you need me to say that again?
Could you move it again, please?
Okay. Like a motion to suspend the rules to discuss Mr. Zerlag's memo to call a special meeting for tomorrow night first.
Support? Moved by Councilman Slater, supported by Councilman Fleming. Discussion?
Yeah. I get a sense that, that the city manager doesn't think that we're going to finish tonight with our city session on the budget. So whether that happens or not, I'd, I'd like to schedule the meeting for tomorrow. And from my opinion, I'm not sure how much time we're going to need until tonight's over with. We may need a considerable amount of time tomorrow if we don't get through what we need to do today. And I think that is more important to accomplish tomorrow night than what we have scheduled for tomorrow night. So I don't want us to get to the point where it takes till nine, ten o'clock to do the first portion and then we need another three or four hours to, to get the budget session through. So unless somebody can persuade me otherwise, I think it would be best for us to cancel the original special meeting for tomorrow night and put this session in place. And I think we can accomplish what we're going to do tomorrow night next week and still be okay on schedule. I, I'm just concerned that if we schedule them both for tomorrow night, we could, could get in a pickle. And we need to get this done this week so that one day we can vote on budgets. So I'm just throwing that out. I, I bring it up whether we should have both of them, but I think we should just do one first time.
Councilman Teetz?
What was, what was planned for tomorrow? There was a little bit of confusion when talking initially. Who, who was actually planned for tomorrow?
Were we going to discuss the, the full city manager position? Excellent.
I thought we were going to do the worksheet.
Candidate profile.
Candidate profile. And then we were going to discuss the five potential groups that may go out and do the job for us soliciting city manager. That's what I thought we were going to do, which could take up some time tomorrow.
Mayor, thank you. One of the things is the position description, which again, that's not as time-sensitive as the hiring of the search firms. Again, I just want to remind you that we have a hundred and twenty days to fill the position of manager. And what we were going to be bringing to you tomorrow night for the special meeting are some potential search firms. We still need to get proposals from those search firms, which we had anticipated bringing back to you as quickly as possible. It's going to take probably at least a week though to get that information to you. So the longer it takes for us to even have that discussion about the potential search firms and to get the direction as to who to go out and get those proposals from is adding to the, the time delay. So if you, if possible, if you could deal with that portion, maybe not getting into the position description, I guess I would ask for you to consider that. And I don't know how long the budget session is going to take tonight. I don't know how many questions. But I would hate to, to not have the opportunity to potentially delve into that if, if there's an opportunity.
Manager Zerlag, just a moment. I want to see what Manager Zerlag's input is.
There's a number of options that we can still accomplish the same thing. I understand a sense of urgency for a replacement for a city manager. There's a greater sense of urgency to adopt a three-year budget. Our target date is May seventh. It's a week from today. There's four people on council that have never gone through this process before. As manager, one would not want to jam a lot of information tonight and then ask for a decision at eleven-thirty, what you want to do with fund balance or what you want to do with the museum. It's critical to have continuity and one face. It's critical to have continuity and one face when we go to budget sessions. Well, not to have one face at budget sessions, but to adjourn with one face, if you will, and adopt a resolution that puts the city forward without any division between two, two groups. You could have the session on the budget document first when you're clear and reach conclusion, at least on the consulting firm. And then if you need, if you feel a sense of urgency still with selecting a firm, and you should, you can do that second. Now, again, this is, this is your show totally. The way we left it last week, and I had the clerk take a look at the film, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were going to find five firms. Well, four firms of Mr. Gerstmann. So that's 20% right there. 20% was the Michigan Municipal League, to get, I quote from them. And I thought it was three national firms that had executive search experience at that point. If that's incorrect, I guess we'll find out tomorrow. But if that is correct, it's fairly easy. I think Peggy already has three national firms, don't you, Peggy?
Yes.
So they can be solicited to give a proposal in a very short timeframe, unless there's an issue about what national firms you want or don't want. And another option for a solution there is that we could solicit the three national firms, and if the governing body wants to add any more firms, they can let us know, and then we'll have six firms to look at or seven. That's all up to you, but again, I'm pleading, and I, I'm wanting somewhere else, and I told, I told my new bosses that we need to finish a budget session here, and it would be, it would not be in good form for any of us to, to be in disagreement, and it would not be, well, it would not be a good protocol to try to jam information down a new council's throat. You need to feel comfortable with what, what's going on in budget sessions. There's a lot of questions that we have, and they're all good questions, and we want to take the time to be able to answer them, not be talking at 1:00 in the morning and then having a budget hearing 7:30 PM on Monday. So as your manager, I'm asking you to please prioritize this, this issue and do the budgets first.
Councilman Fleming.
I'd like to do both tomorrow. The order, which one we do first or second, is the council's decision, but I think we need to do both. The focus tomorrow should be on the, not the profile of the candidate at this point, I believe. It would be on selecting the search firm or firms that were going out for RFPs to, and looking at that and understanding that, that process. And we need to understand, I think, the RFP itself, what we're actually asking them to do in addition to who we're sending in. But then the budget is a high priority as well, so we need to do both tomorrow night.
Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, on the, on the profiles, you know, I filled mine out and looked at it, but I agree, whatever search firm we have is going to have their own profiles that they're going to ask us to fill out. They're not going to take this, jam it through their machine and say, you know, this fits our criteria. So I imagine that, you know, that's going to be secondary down the line. In terms of the firms, it would be nice to see a list of those before we get here tomorrow so we could do a little Google search on them rather than, you know, have to sort through paperwork. And then my third point is being the proponents of these Detroit companies, you know, I know there's a few national search firms in Detroit that do this kind of thing, and I would love to see one in the mix here.
Mr. Zerlik, how much time do you see, or how much are we going to spend the rest of the night here on the budget? And how much time do you see tomorrow left over to resolve the budget issues?
Let me start by answering first. Tom and I were in contact, I was here over the weekend, he was at his Troy World Headquarters, he was at his Howell World Headquarters office in, in Howell, Michigan, and we were communicating. And there's close to 100 slides tonight. Yeah, I did about three, Tom did about nine and so. And they're, they're complicated. They're complicated for people that have gone through it before. And I, we went through a dry run today. It took almost three hours with hardly no questions.
Okay, so we should get started, so we should wrap this up pretty soon. What time are we supposed to meet tomorrow? I thought 7:30. Could we move it forward at this?
No, it's posted, can't, because it's already at 7:15, it's 24 hours, so.
I'm going to ask if you could help me with this, to figure out a way, if I specify to move the study session for continuation of the budget study session to come first at 7:30 tomorrow night?
It would actually be an amendment to, you'd have to call another, you'd have to call another meeting, study session meeting, because you need to amend it. So you'll have to specify that, that it will be changed and amended to include that in it. It doesn't matter the, the order. If you want the budget first, you certainly can do that, and Mrs. Bittner has 15 minutes to, to get that all pulled together.
Okay, if you could do that, we could have the budget set, budget set first, I'll present that.
I appreciate the vote on suspending.
The first vote is to suspend the rules.
Vote on that. With, with the intention of doing both tomorrow.
Yes.
Because my, my feeling is we are on the shot clock.
But we're not going to do the.
No candidate profile. We'll specifically investigate firms tomorrow.
Now, can we go with Councilman Slater's proposal?
First, we're going to vote on suspending the rules.
And I think you brought it forward, and Councilman Fleming seconded it, we just had our discussion. So we need a vote now.
Just to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guinness.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Motion passes, we'll suspend the rules of procedure to allow an amendment to the meeting. We're going to add the search firm review.
No, we're going to add the continuation of the budget study session.
Okay, we're going to add the continuation of the budget study session, starting at 7:30, and then the search firm meeting will follow. And so, did you want to?
I'm moving that.
Okay, he's moving that, second?
I'm sorry.
Okay, seconded, moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guinness.
Yes.
Councilmember Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a break?
Well, do we want public comment?
Yeah, you do have to do.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak, in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.